Morning. I'd like to call this meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission to order. First item on the agenda is public comment. Ed McMahon, would you like to come forward and address the commission? If you would, please state your address, name and address for the record.
My name's Ed McMahon. I'm the executive director of the Home Builders Association of Lane County. I reside in 1233 Helo Drive, Eugene, Oregon.
Ed, I want to make sure the mics are picking you up.
Okay. Why don't I just sit back and do that? So I'll start over. My name's Ed McMahon. I'm the executive director of the Home Builders Association of Lane County, and I reside at 1233 Helo Drive, Eugene, Oregon. And today I'm here to lobby for the appropriate housing mix for Envision Eugene. And if you're looking at your folders on the right side, I have an analysis that I appreciate you following with me. Personally, I think the correct housing mix should be 65% single-family detached, 35% multifamily. First, we need to look at the historical data and know that all this information comes from the ECLA final report. Historically, single-family detached from 1990 through 2007 averaged 773 single-family detached units per year. During our planning period of 2001 to 2008, we averaged 563 single-family detached units per year. If you go down, you'll see that a 60-40 mix averages 412 single-family detached per year. A 151 unit decrease compared to historical data. If you go all the way down to the bottom and look at 40-60, that drops single-family detached all the way down to 275 units per year. Now, per ECLA, the amount over the planning period was 69% single-family, 31% detached. You can see that by Table C2. However, they agree that there is an unusual housing bubble during that period that's probably not going to be seen again in the 20-year planning period. And I agree with that 100%, that that housing boom will not be back in the next 20 years. However, if you take a good close look at Table C2, you'll look at, like in 2003, single-family detached was as high as 90%. And what ECLA ended up with was a 61% single-family detached. If you turn the page over, you'll see Table C3. And what they actually decided to do was use the housing mix for the year 2007, which was 61%. However, if you go to the right, you can see that during that 17-year period, the single-family detached housing mix was actually 63%. But now if you go back to Table C2, basically what's happened is that 69% take 8% off it to get to the 61% that we're dealing with. My argument on that is, if you're going to adjust for the bubble years, only average the bubble years. 2007 and 2008 were two of the worst years that ever hit our industry. So if you take 2001 through 2006 and average those, it's actually 75% take 8 off, like they did to get the 69 down to 61, and you're actually looking at around 67%. That's why I believe that the housing mix really should be about 65. However, we agreed for compromise and for trying to get the community to work together completely, we decided to live with the 60% single-family detached. However, realize that recently, for the last several years, we've been moving a lot of the market demand to our bedroom communities. You can just look at the school enrollment to see that. And even at a 60%, we're probably going to continue to do that, but it's far better than the 40-60. And then I'd also like to point out the fact that on Page 2 toward the bottom, Eco Northwest actually analyzed a 40-60 mix, which is the other end of the spectrum that's been discussed. And as they analyze that, they actually analyze a 40-60 and a 45-65, but follow that by saying, these assumptions do not seem reasonable because there's no precedence for that, these type of magnitudes to change in a city our size. Also, in your brochure, I know that, you know, there's a couple of camps on this, and one camp believes that there's going to be a major demographic shift in what people want in housing. And it's my belief that it's the housing, the market force that's going to depend on what's being built. My members aren't going to build what they can't sell, okay? And, excuse me, just a moment, get this back out. I have a survey on the left side that was done in May, and this was done by a Democratic and a Republican polling service. And the results of that survey are astounding and still show that the American dream of homeownership is still on everyone's top priority. One of the biggest markets that our National Association is trying to get us to market to over the next 20 years are the baby boomers. That's going to be our market. They're going to be downsizing into some very nice homes. And they're not going to be, within the next 20 years, moving out of those homes. They're the biggest section that we're going to be constructing for. And also, in your report, I have an item called Impact 2009, which is a study that we did in April of 2009 that proves that housing does pay for itself, the infrastructure, SDCs and things like that. And I would imagine my three minutes are up. I do have my business card in all those folders. I'd really appreciate the opportunity to talk to you in more detail if you do have questions. And I'd like to close by saying thank you very much for the service that you're giving this community. It's appreciated.
Ed, I, the two suggestions, the two write-ups you have here about homeownership.
Yes, sir.
Multifamily owners, housing can still be homeownership. Is that not correct?
I'm sorry, no.
Multifamily housing can still be homeownership.
You bet, you bet. Matter of fact, that's one bad thing about the mix because right now, it's single-family detached and everything else. And rural housing, like we had on the tour on the land last year, is a very good structure and, but that's true. Multifamily can be homeownership as well.
Second question. Can you compare and contrast the type of builders who build single-family housing versus multifamily? Are they not in your population of members or?
I don't know. Actually, a lot that's going on around the university are my members. I get calls from them on a weekly basis. The majority of the multifamily that's going on around the university is done by my members, and they can do both. To answer your question in more detail, I'd say the majority of my single-family detached homeowners right now are remodelers and the ones that have been around for a long time that know the market and everything have moved into multifamily. They're going where the market forces, telling them where to go.
Thank you.
Bill?
Could I get a copy? My back page didn't get printed.
Oh, sorry, you bet.
You got mine, I already got it.
Okay.
Any other questions, Brad?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number two, we have planning commission elections. Just open it up for discussion unless there's, did you find anything about bylaws that we need to know?
No, I do have a copy of the bylaws here. So it says that we hold elections after the council has appointed or reappointed, in our case, our members of the council. So this is kind of our scheduled time to go ahead and hold elections. So I think Lisa had a few comments last time we met, kind of thinking about what's on our books for the next year. And hopefully you all have given some thoughts to who might want to step up.
In the past, when we've been reappointed, we are re-sworn in. I don't think that's, that has not happened to Bill and I. So I'm not sure that we're members of the planning commission yet.
You are. There was a, that action was taken in a city council meeting two weeks ago now where they approved. I don't know about the sworn in ceremony.
We've always been, when we've been reappointed, you get re-sworn in by the city recorder.
Huh, okay.
And neither Bill, at least I know I haven't, and I'm guessing by the shake of the head, he hasn't either.
I don't have history to know, so.
Alternatively, we could just swear.
I was sworn in the first time, yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll look into that.
So my point is, I'm not sure that we're actually members of the planning commission at the moment.
Yeah, you are.
Well, I would assume you're members until you're replaced, and since you're replacing yourself.
But we've always been sworn in during, when you've been reappointed.
That's so.
So.
Nice try, Ray.
I just wanted to point that out because I will swear at you if it makes you feel any better. Swear at me all you want. Wouldn't be the first. I just thought I would point that out just in case it. To make it official.
Yeah. Swear or affirm.
I swear.
Crossing K's, dotting I's.
Randy?
I would nominate Jeff Mills to be chair of the planning commission.
I would second that.
I have no difficulty at all with that. In fact, I think we'd be well-served, but it seems like every time we come to elections, we talk about wanting to change the process but not wanting to affect it, affect those who are in the queue. So I would suggest, even if we do move forward with this, and I hope we do, that we do talk about just getting out of an automatic rotation because I don't think it serves us well in the long run. So I'd prefer to elect Jeff and whoever's appropriate as co-chair, or perhaps do the co-chair differently than our standard rotation. But I would also propose that we leave the assumption that we're going to do an automatic So I don't know if we want to discuss those separately or at the same time, or, of course, it depends on whether anyone else agrees.
I'd be, I'd be interested in, I know John has brought this up a number of times over a number of years. And if you would like to elaborate on that, what would be your thoughts as to what other procedure might be appropriate or might be considered?
Well, I'm, I think Lisa has a good point, that there are times when certain individuals might be better co-chairs than others, given the complexity and the desire.
Vice chairs or co-chairs?
Or vice chair, excuse me, chair and vice chair. And right now, we're sort of locked into the assumption that no matter who the person is, they automatically assume the position. And if, if the job is important, it's important to have the right person in it. And I guess I would say not all planning commissioners are created equal, either in their desire or their ability. It does create a bit of a contentious potential situation when it comes time to elect, but those are my thoughts.
Is there a little platform development beforehand? We'll discuss.
Well, assuming that I actually can speak as a planning commission.
I mean, I sort of agree with John, and we talked about it a lot. We talked about it at our, some of our retreats. And it's nothing against anyone in the planning commission, but as John says, there are those who maybe have general backgrounds. And as you look forward into our work plan for the following year, I think it does become kind of important that leadership kind of follows the work ahead of us. Now, a lot of times, that work may be all new, and it's always changing and everything else. So I understand John's concern and Lisa's. I'm not sure that we've ever come up with a way that we can comfortably talk about it. And I think that is because we wait too long before the election. We should have something ahead, talk about our work plan, what's coming up, talk about understanding, knowledge, where do you want to be. And nothing against sort of the following tradition, but it's sort of like you get handed it, and if you say no, what's that, are you uncomfortable saying no when you get to that position? So it seems to me what we should be doing is talking to them some period ahead of time so that anyone interested or that person who is not interested can feel comfortable about saying that ahead of time versus the day that elections occur.
Yes?
So one possible way to deal with this would be to request that sometime in the next three months on our agenda that we discuss this issue, not necessarily today? Is that something we can make happen?
And I was wondering, too, if maybe we could vote on the nomination for Jeff and then have a discussion about how we want to do vice chair? Either do that now or delay it a little bit if need be?
When does the new chair take the reins?
The bylaws say immediately.
Ah. That certainly gives you plenty of time.
That's why she wants to get it.
Oh.
Well, you know, in our next meeting is a joint meeting, Jeff. Would you like to do that?
Oh, yes.
Tomorrow night? We could, we could be, we could make that flexible, too.
Okay.
Well, and this might just be a formality, but I guess I'd like to ask Jeff if he would like to be chair. I've not really heard that yet from you, but.
Very good question, Bill. Yes, I guess, yes, I would like to be chair. You know, I feel a little bit somewhat underqualified, given the very great level of experience at the table here. But I also have been in leadership positions enough to know that, that doesn't mean that they're not going to, going to help me and I'll be fine. So I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
So do the bylaws require us to elect our vice chair at the same time?
Well.
Do our bylaws say chair and not still president or whatever?
Yeah.
It says the chair and vice chair shall be elected to one-year terms and shall serve at the pleasure of the commission. The election shall take place following council action on appointments to the commission. So it doesn't, it's not explicit. I think it makes sense to do it at the same time, just.
Well, but given our discussion here, should we have a discussion and perhaps want to change that process, it might be logical to elect our chair and not our vice chair at this point in time, and then make that part of the discussion after. So we have a motion on the table, so we need to deal with that first.
So let's, any further discussion on nomination of Jeff Mills as chair? Those in favor?
Aye.
As opposed? Good job. All right.
All right. So now shall I move?
Not that she's in a hurry.
Pass it along right now if you would like?
Sure.
Okay. All right. This is the ceremonial passing of the gavel. Congratulations.
Better than an ugly tie.
Thank you, Heidi. And I guess I'd just like to thank Heidi also for her service this year. She's had a lot of things going on in her life, some voluntary, some by necessity, and I think she's still managed to do a very good job, an excellent job of serving as chair, and I've enjoyed working with you, so, and look forward to it. So our next question is whether and how to proceed for the vice chair, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So what are our options here, Phil?
Well, it sounds like there's interest in perhaps postponing this until the room has a chance to talk about how they'd like to, you know, consider this process in the future. My only concern with that is, are we really in the same, are we putting ourselves in the same situation where we are discussing how to determine the next co-chair when we have an opening, when we actually, you know, do have something in the immediate future? And I wouldn't want it to drag on for long because we need somebody to be able to back.
That would be my immediate concern, would be that there's at least a pro tem vice chair in case I can't make it.
Jeff?
Yes.
I would, if we're going to stall, I would suggest that Heidi becomes the co-chair if she wants to, pro tem until we.
Vice chair. Pardon? Vice chair. My turn to correct you.
Yes. Vice chair, pro tem until that, that question is, is answered. Two reasons. One, she is past chair, which would suggest she will not be next vice chair. And it allows us then to maybe have a little bit of time to further explore these and maybe get some better input from staff and sort of deal with the issues. Now, it's easy to volunteer somebody else for a position, so I guess she would have to agree to that, and I'm not sure how we would move forward with that at this point. Heidi?
I'm curious if anybody would like to be vice chair.
Now, there's a good question.
Let them, let them put their, their hat in the ring.
By tradition, who would be the next person?
Well, I was going to suggest we not know that, so.
Well, that's a good idea. That's a good idea.
Because I don't have any idea who that is. I don't know if anyone else does either, but I think it would be a cleaner discussion if we didn't have a name sitting in front of us.
I would agree with that.
Yep.
Randy?
Yeah, back to the pro tem idea. There is some precedent for the outgoing chair to be the backup. That's, we've had that experience where the vice chair or the vice president was absent, and then the past, the most recent past chair or president took that spot. So if we need that motion to nominate Heidi as the chair, vice chair, pro tem, I would make that motion.
If nominated, would you serve?
Well, it depends on how long you guys are going to take to make a decision, I think.
Oh, not too many years.
I would hope we'd get it on our agenda as soon as it was practical.
And I might suggest that since we, if this can be done, it may be that if Heidi agrees to this, that it would be appropriate for Jeff and Heidi to actually do, sort of act as that, that nominating committee and talk to each individual outside of here and get interests and, you know, get a feel for what's ahead and what's not ahead. And that way, it's not done amongst everybody else sitting here. I'm not going to raise my hand to step on somebody else's foot or whatever else. It may be a way to do that. Yep.
Well, so just in, is there anybody who doesn't want to? Okay. That's helpful. Thanks.
That's a roundabout way of getting the answer to your original.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. My only concern is things in my life are still kind of in flux, and I'm not really sure what, what's happening in the near term. So I don't want to, I don't want to put us in, in the same position.
Carol, what's your feel for how long it would be before we could get this on a, on a meeting agenda?
Well, we are meeting next Monday in a week.
That's a work session, yeah.
We do have a work session.
And that's for.
I presume that we would have enough time on that agenda. Would, would that give you two enough time to talk to each of the other commissioners and do a little background?
Sounds like they just did.
Oh, I mean enough to, yeah. We had to talk to three people.
Yeah, I think, I think the answer is yes. We could do that in that timeframe.
Okay. So we'll be ready to hold elections for the vice chair on Monday?
Next week. Assimilating, depending upon the discussion, but assimilating. And if we do this with, election with the vice chair outside of the current bylaws, is there, what kind of, in other words, if we're not doing the standard rotation?
That's.
It's not in the bylaws. It's, it's, okay, it's.
It's an old.
Okay. So we're, we're good from that standpoint?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, so this sounds like Heidi and I have a little homework to do with the three prospective candidates in preparation for next week. John? And I would suggest you re-ask the other two in case they change their minds in the ruling to reconsider.
Will do.
Everybody work on your platform statements.
Yeah.
Do you rather, do you rather have money, or would you like foodstuffs, or how would you like that?
I respond to all the chocolates.
An extra, an extra day in the week would be good right now, so. So are we. Show great leadership to. Are we done with election business for the moment?
There, there is one other thing, and that is, there's the subcommittees.
Yes.
And elections might be a good time to also revisit our subcommittees and, and make sure that we're still, you know, where we want to be there. And so we could do that today, or we could save it until next week or a later time.
I guess my gut would be to burn one bridge at a time here, get through the vice chair, and then go to the subcommittee work.
Okay.
If ever, does anybody else have another thought on that?
I agree.
Get that done, and then we can go to, go to the subcommittees and, and figure out what moves might need to be made there.
So would you like to do that on Monday or at a subsequent meeting?
Do you have copies for everybody of that?
I do. That might be helpful to.
Perhaps we could see what we're on because sometimes we forget.
And I actually have one question regarding the Sustainability Commission. I have some recollection of Commissioner Byerly and Mills and Randall, and so can anyone help me clarify for me who is our liaison to this Sustainability Commission?
I think the only thing we really did was form the CLUTAC Subcommittee.
I believe I took over the liaison position when Ann left, though.
Okay. Thank you.
And I know they are discussing how they want to relate to us as well, so we're hearing from them, too.
So maybe we should add CLUTAC to this list. And that is, or no, is it?
No, go ahead and add it. It's worth talking about briefly in terms of who's going to be on CLUTAC for the future.
And currently, it's, it's Chair Mills and.
The three of us, I think.
Oh, the three of you?
Yeah, there are three, yeah.
Coordinated Land Use Transportation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, an update on this, Carol, and the airport committee was dissolved some time ago. And what's not on here is the University Relations Committee that I'm currently the liaison to.
You have a liaison.
Pardon? Down near the bottom.
Speak your name there.
Oh, yeah, okay.
But we didn't have you in there, so.
Oh.
So as you can see, we have the, the committee in the left-hand column, what we understand to be the current appointments, and then moving forward, what we think needs new appointments. So several of these have a not applicable, including the, the airport committee because those are.
Oh, I see.
The work is completed or the committee is no longer meeting.
Okay. Sorry.
Got it.
And I believe I'm on the Opportunity Siding Committee, replacing, I don't know who. Maybe I'm wrong about that, but I thought I was.
Okay. And Bill's on infill, right?
I was on the Arwin Flightlot team, but that work, I think, is done.
Oh, that was a subcommittee of the infill compatibility standard.
And maybe it's ICS, they just seem to be merged together anyway.
Yes.
And Carol, you, I think you said this, but just so I'm clear, we have this far-right hand column that says new appointments, NA. Does that mean we don't have to worry about those?
That's correct. Not applicable.
Those are sunsetting or discontinued?
Yep. And that includes.
All the street stations gone.
Walnut Station, which is complete.
Yep.
The Eugene Redevelopment Advisory Committee, which is no longer meeting. The Eugene Comprehensive Lands Assessment, which is, has completed its work. The Community Climate and Energy Action Plan, which is completed. And then the airport, which is no longer.
Should we be showing the Community Resource Group membership on here or not?
Good question, and.
Technical Resource Committee work that they, that some folks are doing.
Yeah, it's something that we could.
I mean, it's not, they want to point it out of this commission, but it is a responsibility that people are carrying.
Right. We could sure add that. And then, of course, we also have the ability to add new subcommittees as the need arises at any time.
Well, let's, what sense of the commission on adding this to next Tuesday's work session to work our way through this?
Tuesday?
Monday.
Monday, excuse me. I see mostly nodding heads, so let's go ahead and add it. Next item of business, Envision Eugene.
Carol, so I can kick this discussion off, but last time we met to talk about Envision Eugene and specifically housing land need, it was brought up that the, the commission hasn't really had an opportunity to discuss their own position. And I think this was instigated because we do have memos, memorandums from the Housing Policy Board and from the Sustainability Commission that have been forwarded to the city council. This commission has had an opportunity to have very frequent updates about what is going on with the work. And we've also met, had joint meetings with the city council to kind of earlier on to discuss the principal, or the pillars, excuse me, as those are being developed. But it sounded like there was kind of an interest in having some time to talk about the information that you had been presented, discuss if this commission wants to take a position, and so how to forward that to the city council. So this is kind of an opportunity to. So, this is kind of an opportunity to have an open-ended discussion. I thought what I would do is just let you know what our timeline is moving forward, so you have some context maybe for this discussion. So, we will be back to you actually next week on Monday to provide any updated information that we have on housing land need. And we hope there will be some new information coming out of the Technical Resource Group there. We're also then going to the council on the 29th with the same information. At that time, we'll also be kind of looking at the, the discussion around economic development and industrial lands and refreshing people's kind of minds about how we got to the number that we have now and where we are in looking at potential expansion areas. So, we have some updates coming to you next week. After that, council goes on, on recess for a month or so. We have some open houses planned for the public, one in early August and one in early September to provide additional information. We are not planning on making any staff recommendations prior to the fall after we have had input from those open houses and from other opportunities that we can provide. And so, there's no, I guess, the takeaway message here is there's no kind of impending decision coming up here. At the same time, I think it's good to start having the discussion about, about just what role this commission wants to have in some of these decisions and what position you might want to take. So, any questions that might help?
I think it might be helpful for the commission to understand the role that this commission may have at some point in the future. Recognizing that it will be, I believe, legislative, a legislative process as we move forward. And what I'm talking about is, once the council sort of makes a decision on policies, then we'll have to start writing code and we'll be dealing with the code issues as a, as a planning commission. I assume the typical process through public hearings and outreach and so on and so forth. And I've asked Emily this because of my work on the TRG. And it is, it appears because it's legislative that we would not have any conflict with any of the work that we've done in the past. But I think it's, it's good that the, maybe that's, that might be an issue that some planning commissioners might like to talk about a little bit or at least get some input. And maybe it's not. Maybe it's not a problem at all because there will be likely Metro Plan amendments and we'll be going through a whole Metro Plan process, which will be quite extensive, I believe.
Most likely, yes. And there will certainly be code amendments that are necessary to implement.
Well, speaking to that, Rick, you know, I may have an opinion about what I think the mix should be, but the council gets to make the decision and our job is to write code to implement that decision. And I don't see a conflict. Even if I don't agree with council's decision, that's not my role to try to sabotage or prevent it once it comes back to us as code.
Yeah, I didn't mean, I probably misspoke if I said conflict, but I just think that that's a discussion that the planning commission just at least should understand where we'll be on this because we will have a very extensive period of time that we are very much involved in that whole process going forward.
So, I don't see a conflict, even if I disagreed with council's position.
I don't see one at this time, but we will, if we see the conversation going in a direction where there might be, we can certainly flag that for you.
Phil? I guess my question then, just to clarify, will we have opportunity to weigh in with our opinion on what that housing mix should be to council and not just kind of let that go without comment? I mean, I'm assuming that we're.
That's what the day is about.
That's what the day is about. Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
It's not your last opportunity to discuss it, though.
Sure.
I guess just, I would find it ironic if we heard from the Housing Policy Board, the Sustainability Commission, if, excuse me, if council heard from those two bodies and not from us. So, I hope at some point in time we do come to a position, even if it's no position. And I would suggest the later the better because I suspect there's still more to be learned. But I still think it's important to know how things are evolving. And maybe we can start having discussions about where we sit philosophically as we move along, too.
John, you use the term the later the better. What do you, can you expand on that a little more?
For me, personally, my, I'll tell you where my line in the sand is. I, I believe this community is, is having a severe challenge in filling our need for affordable housing. And there's an assumption out there, and as far as I know, it's really mainly an assumption, that multifamily housing is more affordable than single-family housing. If that were true, that would move me towards being supportive of providing more multifamily housing. But I did a very quick Google search asking is multifamily housing more affordable? And I found several articles that said yes, but none of them said why they felt it was. So, for me, I'm still not convinced that that's the case. So, therefore, hopefully, as time goes on, we have more empirical evidence that tells us whether there is a nexus between affordable housing and multifamily housing. So, I'm willing to take a position on what I don't know now, surprised, but I'd rather have more substantive evidence and I hope it comes to us as we go along. That's my concern.
Commissioner Duncan can, can weigh in here. Were you at TRG last week?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so we, the Technical Resource Group has discussed affordability as it relates to housing mix and have, it's been inconclusive to date. And we did include the matrix that that group put together for, for reference. But at our last meeting, we did talk about, the idea was to break down the housing mix into further categories beyond just single-family attached and multifamily. Look at maybe some of the different types such as row housing. And if I recall correctly, at that point, we thought that might be an opportunity to look at some of the affordability characteristics with those individual housing types and, and explore that a little further. Don't know how conclusive it will be, but there is certainly an interest that I heard from the Technical Resource Group to continue that discussion about affordability.
Good. So, therefore, I'm on the right track perhaps and that more information may be coming before we have to sit down and form a position.
It may, but I'm, I'm.
Not guaranteed.
We're going to talk about it some more. Do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah, actually, there, there are two affordability questions that we have to deal with. The first one is goal 10 affordability, meaning that do we have housing for all the different income segments throughout Eugene in, in that demand? The other one, of course, is the affordability, which we typically talk about, and that is for low to moderate income levels. I've done some research on the TRG and talked to one of the planners up at Newburgh, who, they actually have just finished sort of their whole plan. And it was a multi-year plan. And as I did a lot of research, I found that those who actually had affordability plans, cities that did, it took them several years to actually be able to create a policy and documentation to do that. It was interesting to know that the ones that tend to be able to deal with affordability from low to moderate income tend to be areas where they don't have much in the way of control for urban growth boundary. Because basically, the articles talk about you have to create surpluses. It doesn't really define what surpluses are, but it suggests more lands, you know, get ahead of the curve type of thing versus being behind the curve. And so, that one, I think that I'm going to believe that, you know, I'm not, I'm trying to not talk as saying what the TRG is going to do at some point, but I believe what we're going to try to do is maybe talk about it, get council to really, you know, put together a work plan where we actually can do the kind of housing study that we need to do for those issues. Not the one that we tend to do, which is, gee, we need to have more affordable housing. That's a really great plan. Let's go forth. When you talk about, talk to the housing, housing people we have on staff, you know, they're talking about 100 units a year or some number like that, which, all that's going to do is just get us further and further behind. So, it's a real issue. I hope we at least get to the affordability question from all the stratas as we look at our vacant, partially vacant lands to really say, how will these lands fulfill the needs of the different, the different housing type of needs that we need for our community? You and I have talked about multifamily and I've taught, DLCD has this idea that if you build more multifamily, you create more affordable housing. And yet, when you talk to them and you ask them where are their studies, what kind of empirical data they have, they basically say, we don't have any. We just know that. And if you read the studies where they've actually done some measurements, they come from very, very large communities such as Atlanta or Detroit or places like that, that Eugene is not. And Eugene, places the size of Eugene just don't do these kinds of studies because they're, they're very expensive, very challenging to do, and there's a lot of issues around that. So, it's going to be a real, a real interesting process because I'm not convinced, even with my professional background, that that question is really true, that multifamily creates more affordable housing. And I would love to get to the point, and I'm not going to suggest that I, I know that and that's my decision. I'm like you. I don't know where the data is yet and we aren't doing it. And so, I don't know how you answer that question. And I talked to the folks at HUD and, of course, they always deal with, with low-income housing projects and so on. So, they never really study the issue. Does it create more? Is it better? They just say that it's a good idea, so we're doing it. And I can't say that it's not. But I don't know that, given our land use codes in the state, that we actually can create a situation where we can create a surplus. We can't do that. And I don't know if that's the answer either. But it gets to be a real question of how do we get to that conclusion? And I hope the TRG at least will investigate the multi versus single family and realize that as we talk about housing mix, single-family detached is one category. Every other kinds of housing is in the other category, which doesn't make any sense to me. It doesn't matter if it's ownership or rental or whatever else. Everything's over here and we've got this one area here. Now, as Ed mentioned earlier, you know, we understand where the statistics have been in the past. As a market person, all the work I do, I don't see us making a substantial shift in the market, particularly given where we have been and where we're going. You know, there's a, one of the pillars talks about a lot of concentration of higher-density housing in our commercial core areas and our commercial corridors. But there's some real challenges there, and that is the huge cost of assemblage and all the rest things. So, it's going to be a real challenge to make that happen if we try to move forward. And that's the kind of work that nobody's done yet to figure that stuff out. Now, hopefully, TRG will soon be moving into multifamily housing and more housing in commercial core areas and along our commercial corridors and so on. But I have a real concern that, that there is so much work here that decisions need to be made ahead of time. And I'm not sure how much of that information we're going to be able to get through and analyze because right now, the TRG is meeting with subcommittees and everything else one or two times a week. I mean, you know, six, eight, nine, 10 hours a week right now doing that stuff. There's, it's just a huge amount of work ahead of us. So, it's going to be a real question. But I think it's something that we really need to study. We need to get council to understand that they need to support it and get that work moving and not wait. Heidi?
I wanted to bring up again what I see as a really important factor in affordability, being transportation and talking about the Housing Transportation Affordability Index and just looking at affordability from the perspective of your transportation included in it rather than just thinking about, you know, your, your dwelling unit. And the idea of densifying along transit corridors, I think, makes sense in terms of creating the opportunities for a range of affordability from that perspective. I'm, I'm certainly more inclined toward a higher mix of multifamily to accommodate that. Also, having had the opportunity to live in and experience higher-density, living within Eugene, all services are within walking distance, it, it seems to make a lot of sense. And I've also had an opportunity to observe the range of people who live in my building, which students, retirees, young couples, all, all manner. And one thing that seems like would be really needed would be some more ownership opportunities of that kind of dwelling unit. And I don't know, my gut around it is that, you know, we, I would, I would prefer to see us move more toward a higher mix of multifamily than, than saying, well, you know, the historical trends and this, that, and the other thing have shown that single-family is really where we're at. The younger generation of people really like the idea of compact urban development, it seems to me, from, from what I've encountered and experienced in, in different communities. And I think we should make some opportunity for that. And I also think that, you know, a lot of people don't really want to deal with yard work and other things like that. And granted, there's a range of things that are included in multifamily to allow for, for different levels of, of people's desire, interest for that kind of thing. That's my, my feeling on it.
Well, the little bit of research I did gave me conflicting answers, too. One of the things said that people who live in multifamily housing have fewer cars. Well, we know in this university community that that's not necessarily the case because students still want to have their cars. Now, students aren't the only people in multifamily housing, but I'm just saying that generalities don't always work. Another one said that there's a less demand on infrastructure and government costs because people who live in multifamily housing have fewer children, are less likely to have children. So, that works against our belief that, I know that Jim Torrey was saying, we need to find more affordable housing so we can have more families with children and therefore, we can keep our schools going. So, that factoid didn't work for us either. So, I think the last thing I want to do is try to push the market in a direction that isn't willing to go. And what we end up doing is having people drive further till they qualify because they can't find the mix of housing they have here. So, that's my conundrum, is I'm torn not really knowing where we want to be even though my bias is towards more multifamily. So, given all that, you know, the other thing is I'm in that demographic exposed to want to not have a yard and I just bought a house with a, on a third of an acre of land, so.
We'll subdivide it later.
The house is in the way of doing anything. But anyhow, so, yeah, I, I don't have a clear answer here. My fear is that the answer is that we have to do a lot more than just setting the housing mix in order to meet our multifamily, I mean, our low-income housing need, which is, I think, what you say, Rick. So, I think there's a lot there to say to council now, but I think we still would be better off hearing how things are as we go along and hopefully learn more information.
Lisa?
Yeah, I'm not seeing anything in, in the information or any research showing us the percentage of people losing those single-family homes and having to move into apartments because they can't afford their mortgages anymore. Lots, I know a lot of people in, in doing animal rescue. I get probably 75% of the calls I get are people who are needing to rehome their animals because they're losing their home and they're moving into an apartment that won't allow their pets. And that's my, you know, yeah, I feel like I'm directly connected to seeing how that is. I mean, I'm really in there. I feel like I'm in the trenches with watching that dynamic go on in the community right now.
I think I would echo some of Commissioner Belcher's concerns as far as not taking us a direction that the market's not willing to go. Now, I think we can maybe help that along perhaps. And I think my concern is that, I think we tend to want the perfect and we let that get in the way of the good. And I think we're going to have to get to a point in this whole mix that maybe the perfect is a much higher density and, and all of that, but the market's not willing to go there yet. I know in the one chart, it said that it was a, it would require a major shift. And I just don't see that major shift necessarily happening in the housing mix in the near future with what we're dealing with here. I think it's certainly reasonable to assume that it's headed that way. But how fast and what that percentage is, I think we've got to be careful so that we don't have just everybody moving out to Vanita and Junction City and the other outlying communities, which just puts more strain on the transportation system and those sorts of things. So, that's, I guess that's what, I'm in that same, as John said, conundrum as far as how to balance that.
Lisa?
Well, I agree a lot with what Heidi said about transportation weighing into the costs of, you know, economic housing and that all.
of, you know, economic housing, and that all ties into the amount, your monthly bills, you know, how much does it cost you to get to work? I see people wanting to move closer in and not further out. I mean, that is definitely the constant, gasoline is really weighing heavily on people's minds and I just, I just don't really see, you know, my gut is telling me that that's not a real concern, because the cost of gas is going to dictate, unless, you know, you have a lot of money and you don't mind spending a lot of money on gas. But then there's the other side of it, too, is, I had all the money in the world, I still wouldn't want to travel 50 miles to work and back just because I don't want to, you know, use all that gas. But not everybody feels that way.
Kind of a side comment to Heidi, there actually is an index being developed that's, that also deals with housing transportation and utility costs, which is sort of the, sort of the new one. You know, it's interesting, when I started looking at those indexes, because they were presented to CRG some time ago, and it, it dawned on me, and I, I started looking at Eugene and found that the farthest you can travel inside of Eugene that you can get from downtown is 8.8 miles, which is not very far, you know, when you think about that. And it was interesting trying to figure out that transportation, housing cost, when you only deal with those short distances and it didn't have a lot of effect on it. So I'm not sure how it gets used in a smaller community. My, my other one about the multifamily versus single-family, in, in the best world, in my mind, we move forward with a lot of our pillars and we try to create opportunities to really get more higher-density housing in our core and in our, on our corridors. But on the other side of it, the same thing is true of single-family, you know, just because we say we want something more, it's not going to make it happen until we find the mechanisms to actually help it get there. And the challenge with high-density in corridors is, most of our corridors have small pieces of land, which means you've got to figure out how to assemble and so on, and we don't have a city who can, you know, afford a development-type program where they go out and buy all these things and do this kind of stuff. So it gets to be a real challenge. However, on the other side, statewide planning goals said you can't plan for anything other than, than what your 20-year demand is, and so you can't figure any more supply. So you get to this thing, if we put all in multifamily, then you don't have enough for single-family. If you, if you want more single-family, you drive prices up higher, you chase more people to the suburbs. So it, it's a real question in my mind, do we deal with Eugene proper and say, "Here's our UGB," and maybe we have to kick it out a little bit, but then we actually pull a blind's eye to all the other communities that are growing and actually causing travel, recognizing that, you know, the projections for the, for, from ECLAS says that we're going to have 34,000 people moving here in the next 20 years, but we're going to create 31,000 jobs. So if you take a look at the number of housing units, 15,000, that suggests that, you know, at the outside, maybe 15,000 to 20,000 people from those housing will work here, which still says we've got to bring another, you know, 10,000 to 12,000 to 14,000 people from other communities into our city to work every day, which means if we chase more out or more are displaced out because of our housing plan, we end up with more people traveling, creating more VMTs. So we've got a real balancing act that has to be considered when we do this. If you look at, and Ed talked about this, you know, housing, if you look at historical ownership of housing going back a lot of decades, it typically has been in that 60 to 63, 64% range. The government, federal government enacted some programs back about a decade ago about first-time home buyers. And we actually, and what Ed presented actually goes right along with that, that we pushed, because of these programs, ownership housing to over 70% in this country. And if you look at, most of the people that lost housing were that gap where we created that housing program for people to get into housing that really couldn't afford it and probably shouldn't have afforded it, and those are most of the people that collapsed back out of it down to, we're back to about that historic number of around 61, 62%. So Eugene, I don't believe, can affect that housing mix a lot. The best world would be is create enough housing for those who want single-family and the different housing stratas, but also have programs in place that we can create more dense housing in cores and make that beneficial so that we can somehow figure out how to entice people to move into core areas. When you talk about multifamily ownership, as we've talked about, one of the most interesting things is the most successful project we've had here, which is called the Tate, is also the highest price per square foot of housing cost in our, in our community. There is not any higher than that. So you get to a point where you talk about that ownership type of thing, you're talking about very high numbers because of the cost to create that kind of stuff. You also talk about multi-housing, there's a lot more cost involved with, you know, citing, you know, like you see what's being built around here. These projects are very, very expensive to be building into downtown core. So how do you incentivize those? I don't know. You know, there are programs out there, but they don't tend to, to pay the difference. You know, they take a small chunk. So I think as we move forward on this and we bring more information out, we need to understand that we're somewhat locked in by statewide goals, that we can only deal with X amount of people or X amount of housing units over a 20-year planning horizon. So we have to figure it out, and believe me, no matter what we decide in this community, I'm going to bet 99.9% we're going to be wrong. But we hope to get somewhere there, and I think what it can do most of all is to try to direct us from a code standpoint and a housing standpoint on how to move forward and try to inch it a little bit as, as Ed says, the market's going to change, there is demand for smaller, single-families, maybe there's going to be more demand for housing, but it's going to be a very, very slow take. It's not going to happen overnight because we legislate it. So we need to make sure that we balance it correctly, because the other side of it is, we can push everybody outside of here and we've created more problems than we've been worth. So I don't have an answer. I kind of believe the historical idea still is a good one, but maybe we get into the 60 to 40, or maybe get down to the 55, 45, as the housing subcommittee actually recommended. That was their range of recommendation. To me, that seems like an area that might be able to work as long as we have a very aggressive program to move towards more dense housing, but we're going to have to have a real aggressive program to get that done.
John?
Yeah, there's a lot still to say. You're right, that, the analysis that I think we got said that even if we went to a 40-60 mix, we'd still only have a 4% shift by 2031. I'm actually encouraged by two things. One is the fact that we now do have some multifamily housing constructors in this community. So when we first having these, had this discussion is, it can't work in Eugene because no one knows how to build multifamily housing here. So it sounds like that's changed somewhat over time. The other thing is, and perhaps you can tell me where we're at with this, Carolyn, it sounded like we were talking about, rather than setting a 20-year goal, setting five or 10-year goals along the way and assessing as we went. And where are we at? Is DLCD supportive of a, of a less than traditional or more than traditional way of looking at this?
Well, state law requires that we do plan for 20 years, so there's no getting around that. The kind of phased implementation concept that we have talked about is more kind of about how to manage that growth. So it doesn't allow us to plan for a smaller amount. It does allow us to think, okay, once we have our 20-year need established, let's think about how that, those expansion areas are managed and brought in, and what are the triggers where we make them available for development. But we do have, remember, our seventh pillar, which is flexible, adaptable implementation and continually monitoring and tracking this type of information, such as how many single-family homes, what is the market for single-family and multifamily homes? We can see what is actually being built on the ground. We don't have to wait for 20 years before we, you know, can revisit all this. We can, we can revisit it as needed as we go along and respond to actual conditions on the ground. So I think that kind of monitoring and adaptable implementation pillar is, is pretty significant in this discussion.
And that's what I meant to say, thank you for saying it in a more cogent way. So I think we can, you know, head off in a certain direction and see if we're actually getting there and adapt as we go. But I don't want to get us jumping from a .3 FAR to a 1.0 FAR and making sure, and my reference here is to the nodes, that we set a goal that was too ambitious and what we ended up doing was making things worse rather than better. So I think with some flexible implementation, we may be adaptable, flexible, adaptable, we may be able to set what looked like maybe somewhat aggressive goals, and we can see whether we get there or not, and then adjust as we go and not shut everything down forever.
Mandy?
Yeah, I just wanted to sit here and listen to members of the planning commission that haven't been directly involved in the CRG and the TRG, just to get your impressions on things. And I have been involved with the housing mix specifically right from the start, when the CRG started talking about it, then as the TRG reviewed it. And, you know, it goes back to all uncertainty. To date, there are no conclusive studies that tell us which direction we're going. I think the home builders makes a very plausible argument for a higher percentage of single-family. On the other end of the spectrum, Thousand Friends of Oregon and Friends of Eugene make a plausible argument for higher-density development in the core. And it, the affordability issue, on the other hand, the argument that's been presented in that case is that it's really not a housing issue, it's more of an economic development, employment issue. Improve the economy to the extent you can, increase employment, more housing becomes affordable. So there's one school of thought that no matter what we do with housing, unless it's a lot of subsidy, we're going to have this whole affordability issue and we can argue and talk about it until we turn blue and still not resolve it. What, what I like about the direction that staff is going is that it's the concept of planning for more and managing for less, and kind of hedging our bets that, you know, the American dream is still there and, you know, Heidi, some studies say that, yeah, people in the younger demographic right now like living downtown in high-rise apartments. I've seen that one study that's, that concludes that at least now they do. And, you know, then there's the John Belcher demographic that you eventually want to have that yard for your kids and so forth. So that, the whole end result of, of everything that we've had so far is just plain inconclusive. We're planning for uncertainty. And I share John's concern is that, you know, as we've done with refinement plans, as we've done with nodal plans, if we mandate or regulate or overspecify our plans, they're not right. And then we get into the bind where this planning commission and future planning commissions are dealing with policies that are inflexible and contrary to the circumstances at that time. And again, that's why I think planning for more, hedging our bets that, you know, the, the trend is still going to be towards single-family homes, maybe they're going to be smaller on smaller lots as the population ages, and all these bigger homes and bigger lots that, that the baby boomers own now will be sold off. Some of those can be, are big enough to be converted to multifamily homes or rooms for college students and so forth. I think that's one argument that's been presented itself. But anyway, if we plan for more, do efficiency measures like we've talked about, reducing lot size, if there's a market for single-family homes, smaller single-family homes on smaller lots, certainly that all plays into compact urban development. On the other hand, what Rick is saying is, you know, let's facilitate the higher-density development, let's provide the transit quarters, let's push for more MX lines, let's create the programs, the public-private partnership programs, the expansion of the MPT, to facilitate and encourage and make it easier to, to meet whatever demand there might be in the future for higher-density living downtown. If gas prices go up and the archimotos of Eugene aren't successful in increasing technology to counterbalance fuel, we just don't know what's going to happen. So let's facilitate things on one hand, manage for less. I think that's the approach that we should be taking. Just give ourselves some leeway in this whole thing and see where the market goes. Try to influence it. I think we're dead wrong to over-regulate it, over-mandate things, over-plan things, but let's accommodate the direction we want to head. And I, I think the staff's heading in that direction anyway. So that's my two bits on it. Of, of all the people I've listened to and all the inconclusiveness and all the uncertainty, uncertainty that, that lies ahead of us, we need to build ourselves some flexibility to be able to, future planning permissions and future city councils not get themselves trapped into a corner somewhere where they can't move and adjust to whatever the future might bring. That's where I'm at with it. And I just think we're starting to overanalyze this whole thing and get to a conclusion that we're not going to be able to get to. We just, there are no facts about the future, we've got to remember that.
And I guess, did you want to respond?
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to ask a question. So I know we have flexible, adaptable implementation, and I know we're talking about a phased approach, but when it comes to that percentage of housing mix, is that independent of those two things? Do you see what I'm saying? If, if we get into it and we decide, you know, the 55, 45, or 60, 40, or 40, 60 mix isn't really where it's headed, do we then have that flexibility with either the phased approach or with the flexible, adaptable implementation to shift that as the market shifts?
I think that is what we are definitely talking about when we talk about kind of monitoring and being able to adjust.
Okay. I was just hearing earlier that that percentage, I thought I was hearing might be fixed, and I wanted to make sure that wasn't...
Well, we need to plan for 20-year growth. And so that is the state law, and so they, we do need to go ahead, even though it's, there's no absolute right answer, we need to go ahead and kind of pick a point.
But if we're wrong, can we then change it?
Yes, we can monitor that and adjust that. And I just wanted to kind of add a nuance to something Commissioner Lettich was saying, and that is that when we say plan for more, that's not to say that we can plan for more homes than we think we'll need. So state law requires us, once again, to kind of identify that number, doesn't allow us to have kind of a, an extra supply.
And I wasn't intending that.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, well, let me be real, real clear and frank about that. If we go, my intention is, if you apply the 60% single-family, 40% mix, that's what I'm talking about, you're planning for more. If we do a reverse, if we do something less than that, we constrain the amount of land available for single-family, it's fine that we have Pillar 7 and we do monitoring and we can do flexibility, then it becomes an urban growth boundary change, and we're back into this whole discussion. Whereas if we err for the, for the higher end and manage growth, I know there's all kinds of concern about using up agricultural and forestry and Gold Five-type resources, but that's where the management phasing comes in. And we've got tools in place for that already. We've got an, an existing annexation policy that talks about continuity, or adjacency before you annex, so you're not leapfrogging out to the edge of an urban growth boundary. I think a more robust capital improvement programming process, you know, this planning commission used to look at the CIP every two years, and we decided it was just kind of a pro forma thing, so we decided, what's the purpose in this? If we have a more robust CIP program that talks about where public facilities and services are going to be extended, that's a whole other manag, management implementation tool that controls where and how fast annexations occur. So that's my point. I'm not talking about grossly expanding the urban growth boundary, let's be clear on that. I'm talking about the difference between 60, 40, and something else. And very clearly, my bias is towards the 60, 40. I think there's a case to be made for that, but in the meantime, it certainly, no reason why we can't facilitate and encourage higher-density development, which if successful, if which that's where the market demand is, or the city with its policies can influence that, this vacant land's going to last beyond 20 years.
Thanks for the clarification. I just wanted to make sure that in the language that we were using, that we're clear.
I haven't been clear on that in the past, thanks for letting me clarify that.
Thanks for letting me clarify that.
John?
Well, I flipped that around the other way. And that is, let's suppose we go for a 60-40 and we find that we're at 50-50. Do we have to pull our urban growth boundary in because now we have too much land?
But for 20 more years.
Okay, so it's not an either-or.
It's the management part of it, John. It's how fast you eat that up.
Gotcha. Thanks for that clarification. I guess, the one thing I'm sort of hearing implicit in this is that multifamily isn't necessarily homeownership. And I want to make that point, is multifamily can be homeownership. Certainly, the Tate is multifamily and homeownership. There's at least another high-rise, maybe the one you live in, that's on Lincoln, I believe, that's also owned by the people, it's a condo. The row houses generally tend to be homeownership. And I did see that there's another project moving forward now, hooray. So, that's one thing. The other one is, is I know we've basically danced around a lot of ambiguity here. I don't want to imply, at least for me, that doesn't, that doesn't mean I don't want to tell council something, even if it's that ambiguity. So, I do think we need to continue to discuss this and eventually we do need to say something to council.
Randy, I had you down again, did you already?
I've said my piece.
Rick?
And again, I just want to support what Randy was saying because I am in agreement with Randy because realize that the phased implementation is only in the area outside our current urban growth boundary if we decide to expand. That's where that phased implementation comes in. If for some reason we don't expand the urban growth boundary, then that implementation tool is not a tool because we won't be doing that. So, that's the important thing. The other thing is to recognize that this city's been somewhat unique, as Springfield has, because we had a tied metro plan or metro boundary, is that we don't have to wait 20 years to redo this. As a matter of fact, you actually have the ability to annex one parcel of land if you decide you need it. So, if we are monitoring what we're doing, we can change the process and actually go back in five years, which we probably wouldn't do, but maybe 10 years, we can actually do another 20-year plan. So, it's not that we're stuck with this 20 years because, believe me, at the capacity we've got inside right now, if we didn't do anything for 20 years, either we're going to have a lot of people living somewhere else or we're going to have a very high-dense city because we are running right up against the boundaries based on capacity. And the 20, or the 60-40, 40-60 splits and those things, the reason they're important is because they talk about how many single families. And certainly, if you have more single family, you need more land. It's just, it's just the physics of things. If you have more multifamily, you need less land because you can go up higher. So, the idea of the 60-40, 40-60, when you talk about UGB and Envision Eugene right now, really is talking about how much we think we need for future capacity. And again, we're talking capacity, we're not talking about housing units. The state law says we have to deal with capacity. It doesn't say we have to figure out where we're going to put all these homes. We just have to, we can't plan for any more capacity than what we can, than what we can absorb based on our information over the next 20 years. So, think of that as capacity, not necessarily housing units.
Thought I was done, but I have another confusion. We also have the opportunity through efficiency measures to make changes in how we deal with stuff that's inside the urban growth boundary as well. So, we're not just talking about any new lands we annex. Don't we also have the potential of even rezoning existing parcels as an efficiency measure in order to meet that housing total as well?
We do, it is fairly small. And actually, I believe in your packet, we included a diagram from our last PowerPoint presentation we made to you, page 17. Efficiency strategies in this only account for about 160 units. And that is looking at allowing some alley access lots in areas where appropriate and also promoting more secondary dwelling units. But really, from what the conversation with the community we've heard is they're not really interested in seeing increased density in existing neighborhoods beyond what is already allowed.
I guess where I'm looking, though, is if indeed we're going to increase density along urban corridors, we're going to have to do something different with those.
That density will absolutely increase along those corridors, you're right. So, as we shift the housing mix, there is an associated shift in density.
And that's where I was...
Yep, you're absolutely right.
So, it's not necessarily just making changes to new pieces of land that we annex. We may make some changes in how we look at lands along corridors or cores, well, perhaps. We don't know that.
But just on that point, isn't that why we're assuming that all multi, that the majority, almost all of the multifamily can be accommodated within the UGB because of what we're looking at doing in the higher-density transit corridors?
Along those transit corridors, key commercial areas, and then opportunities for opportunity siting where we get, you know, good buy-in.
Okay.
The other thing, actually, I would add is we are also looking at redesignation of some parcels from medium-density to low-density. And we talked a little bit about that. We have kind of letters of interest out there and we're waiting to see what we hear back.
Gotcha. Can you call that?
Yeah.
It's complex.
Yes, lots of moving parts.
I guess I'll speak here since I haven't spoken yet. And I'm in the position of not being on the TRG Community Resource Group, so I'm kind of feeling a little bit like the spectator here and trying to understand the dynamics of what's going on and taking in everything that's come through and from that group, from those groups. And I find myself constantly coming back to affordability and the things that we do that could impact affordability if we miss on those. Things that I get concerned about is, I guess I'm endorsing what Randy has said in terms of flexibility and planning for the more conservative need. Because we are, in effect, as I understand it, and my understanding is limited, that we're going to have some degree of transition or competition, is another way of putting it, between commercial and multifamily, how that's going to shake out. We're also going to be relying on, where possible, I believe, yet as, yet to be determined mechanism to utilize brownfield for commercial, which will also increase costs and increase competition between multifamily and commercial. I believe that would result, could result in higher costs for either or both. If we put on top of that a more, I'm going to use the wrong word again here, a smaller or a tighter multifamily, where we, again, reduce the supply of land, I just get concerned that with all these measures in place that are efficiency measures in and of themselves to try to be a more compact society, they are also measures that I believe fundamentally will increase cost. And I could be wrong about that, but based on my understanding of economics and those of supply and demand, those things we're doing tend, will tend to tighten up supply in all three categories if we're not careful. And the result of that could be higher costs for people to live here or to move here. And the result of that could be they won't come here to live, perhaps to work, but not to live, which is another thing we're trying to avoid where possible. So, I come back to my first point, and that is my bottom line is going to be affordability to try to make sure that people can afford to live here.
Any other comments or questions about this topic today?
To be continued.
To be continued. We're a little ahead of schedule here.
So, Chair Mills, I'm wondering if we could change the agenda just a little bit and move MPT to the fifth item because we maybe have someone from Community Development who can attend and answer any kind of technical questions we can have. So, if we could go to item five next, if that's okay with folks?
Okay.
So, Alyssa Hanson is here and is just here to kind of prep you for tomorrow night's public hearing.
All right, just first, a couple of logistics. So, tomorrow night, as hopefully you know, there's a public hearing with, joint public hearing with the Lane County Planning Commission and the Springfield Planning Commission. That will be over at Harris Hall, so the Lane County building. There is a 6 o'clock work session, and then the hearing is at 7 o'clock. Also, there will be dinner served at, starting at 5 o'clock. And you all are able to attend that as well. Now, getting into what this is, probably a little confused, maybe, maybe not confused, but as you'll probably notice, this particular metro plan amendment does not affect land on the Eugene side of the metro plan boundary. This is a metro plan boundary amendment that would shrink, actually, the metro plan boundary on the Springfield side to make it at the exact same location as their recently adopted urban growth boundary. This was initiated by the Lane County Board of Commissioners to attain jurisdictional autonomy in those areas you see outlined in orange. Currently, if there is a plan amendment, it has to be approved by both Springfield and Lane County in those areas. You also see reference in this packet to what they're calling Phase Two, which would be the Eugene side. That is not occurring as part of tomorrow night's public hearing. That will likely occur, they're proposing that that occur at a later date. It may not be identical to the Springfield side where they snap the boundary to the urban growth boundary. And that is something that, you know, keep in the back of your mind as we go forward with the hearing tomorrow, but, you know, how it might impact the Eugene side in the future. So, yeah, I could go ahead and pass it around. This is actually in your packet, but if you want to take a look at it. So, just to clarify, tomorrow night's hearing only affects the Springfield side of the metro plan boundary, so the east side of I-5. The reason that you all are there is because there's a provision in the Planning Commission that requires all three bodies participate when the boundary crosses, either way, when the boundary crosses either the Mackenzie or the Willamette River. And you'll note that, I'll just leave it there, the boundary, as it shrinks, will cross back over one of those rivers. So, that is why you are all required to participate. At this point, Lane County is recommending approval. And Springfield is still working out some final details with the Springfield Utility Board. And hopefully, we'll hear more information about that tomorrow, particularly at the work session. Turns out, some of these areas are where they have wells that provide water to the city of Springfield. So, they're working out how to, you know, deal with those areas. In terms of the Phase Two, which would be the Eugene side, that would actually occur as part of or after Envision Eugene. But we clearly have some different issues over here with the airport. We also have Lane Community College. We have those two areas within our metro plan boundary, but outside the urban growth boundary. So, we may need to, as a city, think about how we want to handle those particular issues. So, that is all I have. Like I said, there's a work session tomorrow night. One more thing, there's actually two, for Lane County, there are three other issues that they have to deal with as part of this. So, Eugene will be considering the part about changing the metro plan boundary. Lane County also has to, would also have to redesignate and rezone these properties and do a little bit of changes in their land use code. And you will not participate in those three, although you probably have to sit through it. You will not participate in that part of the hearing. So, that's all I have.
Do we necessarily need to sit through those or can we do the joint?
Yeah, I kind of, I suppose, I think the hearing is going to be for the entire matter. I think they're trying to be efficient and have it that way. I can check and see, I'm concerned that the work session, however, is kind of cover the gamut. In terms of the hearing...
Yeah. The deliberations?
Right, right. I think that's a good, a good point. Right.
Excuse ourselves?
Yeah, yes.
I'm just curious, you said LCC and the airport are unique to Eugene as we go into Phase Two. Are there other ramifications that we ought to kind of keep in the back of our minds as we listen to what happens?
Well, I mean, right now, anything that's in the metro plan boundary that's outside our urban growth boundary, that, you know, there's a proposed change, a plan amendment, the city does have a say in that. And so, one of the county's impetus for this was actually what happened with Delta Sand and gravel.
Yeah. Refresh me, Alyssa, if there's an action on the Springfield side of I-5 in the donut, as we used to call it?
Right.
Can, can you, and let's say Lane County and Springfield agree on the action to be taken. Does currently Eugene have the ability to veto that?
There's only, only in the instance if the UGB or the metro plan boundary were swapping or, you know, crossing one of the rivers or a ridge line, and I can't remember what the third thing is. But it would actually have to be a pretty big shift. Right, an expansion or retraction. But I think it was intended to be an expansion.
Yeah, that's, yeah, nobody foresaw this coming.
Yeah.
Alyssa?
Yeah, the city of Eugene is recommending approval of this. And my concern is that there's not a solution yet about what to do with the water, the E-Put, isn't it?
It's actually Springfield.
Springfield stuff, yeah, that's right. Yeah, and I guess I feel a little bit nervous about moving, you know, recommending to move forward without having some solution on the table or at least having it in the works because, I mean, what's to say that it actually happens? And, I mean, we're saying, let's go ahead and move forward without, you know, a plan implemented to protect the citizens of Springfield's water.
So, I just wanted to clarify that the staff recommendation was if the other two support it, and maybe the underlying, what I should have been clear on, is assuming that they can resolve that issue in a positive way that meets both of their needs and they both recommend approval, then the city should support that. But I, yeah, I agree. I mean, if they can't come to a resolution, it doesn't make sense for the city to support it.
Does EWEB also have some wells or easements over there as well?
I am not sure. It was my understanding, it was only Springfield Utility Board. I can, I can send that question over to the county.
Seems to me at some time we did, maybe we gave them up or maybe I'm, my memory again.
But we had an intake at Hayden Bridge. Yeah, who's jurisdiction, well, that's my question, is whose jurisdiction is the Hayden Bridge area in?
So, if you could get that for us, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
And the reason for that question, Randy, is?
Well, just like subwater, EWEB water for us is involved over there as well.
Right.
At least we think it might be.
Well, I guess the question that I have in this, go ahead, John.
So, we still will have a contiguous Eugene-Springfield urban growth boundary. It's not until we modify the metro plan that, assumably, it will split as the state requires.
Although, right now, we're in that funny transition period where Springfield has adopted their own urban growth boundary. So, if you're standing in Springfield, there is a Springfield-only urban growth boundary. If you're in Eugene, it's Eugene-Springfield.
Okay, and then...
And this isn't, this, this action would not change either of those.
Okay. And then finally, we, I guess we can assume that Lane County will want to do the same type of taking back jurisdiction?
They, yeah, they're proposing to do something similar on the Eugene side. And they know that there are, there are other issues, as I mentioned, you know, regional facilities on our side that will need different consideration. And, you know, we're not as far along in establishing our own UGB. So, that will, those conversations will kind of happen as Eugene, Envision Eugene moves forward.
So, assumably, we'll figure our boundary and then we'll deal with this issue.
Correct.
Thank you, John.
A question that I had was related to urban growth, is urban growth boundary related also? And I'm thinking of the industrial lands that we're planning for and designating that are going to be, be and remain outside the urban growth boundary? Potentially. And where will those, how will those be entering into this consideration?
So, are you talking about the proposal to expand the urban growth boundary? Or are you talking, or are you talking about...
My understanding, and this is revealing my limited understanding, is that there could be some industrial lands that will not be brought into the urban growth boundary, but will be considered for the future. but will be considered for the future.
Goshen is, is the one that was called up. It, as far as I can tell, does not fall within the metro plan boundary. I can't see the map, but I've never known it to fall within.
So it's not there now.
It's not there now, and it is not planned, it has not been proposed to be at any part of this. So.
Okay.
It's on, it's, it's on the west side of I-5 as well, so that's, yeah. Interesting question.
Randy, do you have anything else?
Goal Five resources that are in the donut area. The county is proposing to just adopt the city's Goal Five inventory and protection measure.
There's actually a Goal Five inventory that covers the donut area that Lane County was involved in.
Okay.
Adopting, and so that would, they would put their protections on that.
And does that apply to the Eugene side as well for future reference? Was the county involved with?
Yes, they did the whole, yeah, the entire donut, in fact, both sides. So there's a Goal Five inventory that covers the area that's outside the UGB, but inside the metro plan.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
See you all tomorrow night. That'll be your chance to.
Yeah.
Open and close the hearing.
Next item?
Yes.
Back to Envision.
Thanks. This is really an item for Envision Eugene Implementation MPT. This is a, really a for-your-information piece, because the council does have a work session on MPT on Wednesday. And, of course, as we discussed earlier in our, our discussion about housing and really how to support dense housing, MPT is a tool to do that. And so there is a, it is an implementa, has an implementation piece to Envision Eugene. What is happening right now is, at the state level, MPT, which is the multi-unit property tax exemption, something. It, it is, it, there was something at the, at the state level where the date sunset for that. And so the state legislature has looked at that and they have extended the date. So once again, it is a tool, it never actually, we didn't have a period where it wasn't a tool, but ahead of time, they decided to extend the period before it expired, so that it is a tool for local jurisdictions to have. However, at a local level, we also need to extend our, our date so that we can continue to use it as a tool. So council will be having a discussion on Wednesday about that. We also anticipate that there'll be some discussion about the boundary of MPT, because whenever we do talk about it, that boundary often does come up. And I believe what, actually, Denny Bro is here, and Denny, could you tell me, maybe say what the staff recommendation is for MPT?
Yeah, at this point, the, the staff recommendation is to basically bring back an ordinance in September, when council comes off a break, that would basically put MPT in place for the downtown plan boundary. And then, basically have some initial, or some additional discussions with the city council about other areas in Eugene as part of implementing Envision Eugene that might also be included. But our sense is there's a need and a kind of an agreement on it being a kind of a necessary tool for downtown. We actually have a couple of projects right now that will rely on MPT in order to get off the ground. Eight-Fifty, Pearl and the Taco Time Building are both proposed housing projects at this point. So again, our, the recommendation, the city manager's recommendation, is to put it in place and keep it in place and provide some surety that it's going to be in place for downtown, and then have additional discussions about what other areas of town it, it might be implemented.
Two questions. One, the extension is just for the program itself. It doesn't increase the exempted tax period of time, does it?
No, there is, there's, it extends the program for 10 more years, and that would be, that's basically what the state did with the statewide program, and we would probably recommend that we mirror the state and have it on the same timeline.
Not just the availability of Eugene to use it, but it doesn't extend.
That's right. It's a 10-year tax exemption, it always has been 10 years. There has been one change, I think, that's worth mentioning, though, in the state legislature, the law was that additional, historically, additional parts of the project that are considered to provide public benefit are eligible, so open space and parking and other things that aren't necessarily the bricks and mortar of the building were considered to be eligible. Portland historically has stretched the public benefit definition a little bit further than we have, and they've included retail as, in some projects, to be considered to be a public benefit, and that retail commercial space has also received the exemption. And ours, and our boundary's basically only been the housing part of a mixed-use project. So the, the law now states that on a project-to-project basis, you could declare that the commercial space is also exempt, and, and the housing and the commercial would be both exempt on a project-to-project basis if there's public benefit.
And as I read the program and my little bit of knowledge of it, a request is not necessarily approved simply because it's in, in the MPT area. It's got to meet certain criteria. And it talked, the AIS talked about how many projects were approved. Has a request ever been turned down?
There have been, but I don't know specifically how many. I mean, this program goes back to the mid-'70s, so we don't really have all of the history, but there.
There have been.
Have been. You know, ultimately, you know, we have a public by benefit scoring system, but ultimately the council really has the authority to approve or deny a project, even if it meets the basic criteria. The council has that kind of latitude.
And one last question, if I can. I could foresee the possibility of West 11th, the transfer corridor, being in the future proposed as a part of the MPT area. This opportunity-sighting concept that we've been dealing with since July 17, 2005.
[laughing]
If there, I'm wondering about the process of designating the areas to which MPT can apply. If, if, if it should come to pass that MPT is a tool used to incentivize the OS process, and somebody, a developer identifies a corner somewhere that's one block wide, and the neighborhood says, "Great idea," how difficult would it be to get the MPT designation applied to that? Is that something the council can do within 30 days, or is it quite a, quite an effort?
I mean, we've looked at that as, I mean, for example, you can't, we've determined you can't cherry-stem from one boundary to the next to connect the boundaries. They have to be a continuous boundary. So for a Jean Tate's project, for example, the Tate, we extended the boundary, but it was basically connected to the current boundary.
Oh, it has to be connected to the core.
At one time. Yes, so, you know, it, I mean, it's, it's a good question, whether you could have two different boundaries in town. I think you can.
Okay.
But have to be operating kind of under a separate ordinance. But under one kind of program, the boundary has to be kind of continuous. You can't cherry-stem the different areas. So you'd have to create a separate boundary.
Okay. Opportunity-sighting.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
John?
Good to see you, Denny.
Good to be here.
A few questions. First of all, in that boundary scenario, could we create a boundary that basically was an octopus with all of the corridors being continuously connected to a central?
It's what we did when we, currently, the Trainsong area is within the MPT boundary, and we connect it via the corridor, so Sixth and Seventh.
Rather than just one arm, we could have eight if we wanted.
Yeah, I mean, they'd have to have some, some real connections that that corridor is also eligible for exemption as well.
Right.
That's what we determined in that case.
In that case, it might become more of a council decision whether, if you had such a large area, it would have to be more discerning by council to decide whether to approve it or not, perhaps.
And we'd have to really look at the law and see what options are for different boundaries. We haven't gotten that far yet, but that would be part of the next phase of our investigation.
My memory of past planning commissions is that MPT has come before us before, and it strikes me that at that point in time, we actually made recommendation to council. And I notice that we're not having that opportunity this time. And I'm wondering.
Well, this, that's something we could consider in the future, and certainly with the Envision Eugene implementation, your recommendation is being very important. I think this was more of kind of seen as almost legislative.
Housekeeping.
And that, you know, something that we just kind of need to do to keep the program going. If, if this commission, however, wanted to make a statement about whether they thought that it was important to do that, we could certainly pass that along, at least in a verbal form at the work session on Wednesday.
Well, I just happen to have a motion here.
Oh. Wow.
For consideration, and if no one seconds it, that's fine. And basically, what I would suggest we say is, should the city council adopt either option A or B, or some other option that involves further deliberation, did they consider requesting the planning commission review the issue and submit its recommendation?
I would second that.
Also, up there and seconded, those in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion, thank you all. Discussion. Rick?
In, to be fully transparent, my comments about MPT and actually the document I sent you was sent as general information, but I am a partner in a project that currently has applied for a MPT to the city council. So I want to be open about that. It's not going to skew anything I say or do, but I certainly support John's recommendation for that. And if the commission is comfortable with me voting on that because of my disclosure, I'm happy to do it. If not, I'd be, I would respectfully submit that I will not vote on that.
Even though you're not sworn in, you're just trying to get out of this.
Not at all. I've got a lot to say about things like, forget that I have a project.
John?
I'm comfortable with Mr. Duncan voting.
Any other discussions, questions, comments? Vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries?
Can I ask one more question of Denny? Mr. Bro, excuse me.
Fine.
Has there been a historical trend towards projects primarily around the university? Or has it been sort of sprinkled throughout the community? But over the past few years, has it been focused, the approval's been focused in the area around the university, or is that just a perception of mine?
Well, I think the, the market factors are obviously driving what's happening in the West University area. I think, you know, you could argue that what's happening there is really what MPT was intended to do, is, is create more projects, more density, and higher, hopefully, higher-quality projects as well. There have been projects downtown, Broadway Place, the Tate, High Street Terrace, that occurred downtown as well. There's, you know, development downtown is just much more difficult because of the market, because of existing conditions downtown. You know, you're dealing with older buildings, and you have to deal with, parking is a lot bigger deal, more expensive usually to deal with. So there's been less projects downtown, if you were just to compare, just because of the, it's just a much more challenging dilemma, and I think that's why the city manager's recommendation is, you know, let's agree on downtown, because we understand what those challenges are. We've seen them, and, and let's try to make an impact now, and then talk about what other areas need to be removed or expanded, or whatever, wherever those discussions take us.
Yeah, should the council accept our request? I think it'd be hooze us in that discussion to talk about, is MPT really getting us what we need around the university, since the demand is there already? I mean, as you pointed out, it may be increasing the quality of the projects, but I wonder if we're not providing incentive for something that's already going to happen. But that's a topic of discussion, should we have the opportunity to have it.
Commissioner Randall?
My questions got answered.
Commissioner Duncan?
I sent late this morning a little four-page that our company has sort of put together about MPT. And what MPT really does in a theoretical way is, it increases the value of land. By increasing the value of lands, you reduce the value of improvements. And when you can get improvement values to where there, when the land is improved, is less, is, is less value than that land would be if there was nothing there, that's where MPT really comes into play. And some of the reasons why it hasn't worked in other areas, such as downtown, that we've seen, is that typically, the improvement values downtown are substantially higher. Then if you look at the university, where you've got an old house sitting on a valuable lot, that old house then loses enough value that you take it down. The challenge downtown is, is you typically have higher-value buildings sitting on the land, so you can't reduce the building to a negative number. The challenge in Trainsong has been the same thing, is that we've looked at that several times, and one of the challenges you get in, in Trainsong and that type of area is that the building still costs you as much to build there as it does at the university, but there, the land and the rent that you can get is so low that you can't even support construction value, your construction costs, so there's no even small profit to be made. People don't tend to build for no profit unless it's a nonprofit or something like that. So sort of, when we've done our analysis in some of these areas, you get to a point where, what it does is it makes the land sort of less negative, is what MPT accomplishes. So you still don't get a return to even the costs. So even if you could buy land for zero, you can't get enough value out of the property after you build it to make it worth constructing. So it's a real challenge to get it done. And if any of you've got questions, we tried to put together sort of an analysis from what we see valuing properties up around the university. And truly, what's happened is the rent levels have escalated so much in the last four to five years, six to seven years, with the demand for housing up there, that it's finally got to a point, or it finally did get to the point in about '04, '05, that you could start building these things again. If you look up around the university, there were very few projects built in those, in many years prior to about '04. And in fact, the sheet that we got here, the council actually put a moratorium, I think it was in '96, on MPT. And if you look at your sheet, there was nothing constructed between '96 and '04, when they reenacted MPT, and I think it was '02, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
So you saw that. It does actually affect things getting built. And again, you can find projects up around the university, and I would venture to guess that if you found them up there that were not MPT projects, there's two or three things that come into play. One, they owned the land for a considerable period of time, or they're not building to the level of quality that the units are that are getting the MPT. Or there was, or their projects were very, very large, and the economy scale plays in. As an example, the Paradigm on Pearl, which just got it, they received, you have to have 100 points to get a possible approval from the council. That project, because of its size, was able to get 300 points, which nobody's even got close to before. But again, it was the size of the project that had all the economy scales, but also could get a lot more points. And recognize that a lot of the projects around the university will be small infill on existing lots where you may have other things like that. Again, larger projects up there do tend to pencil out better just because of the economy of scales. But most of what's going on up there are smaller projects.
Commissioner Ward?
And so we've looked at expansion in Trainsong, and that doesn't seem to pencil out. Are there other areas of town, you know, Bethel, South Eugene?
I haven't looked at South Eugene. There's, there's a possibility there. And actually, Johnson Reed up in Portland about last November, something like that, did a study where they tried to show where it might be financially feasible, and I believe the two corridors that they came up with were mainly the South Willamette area and Coburg Road, that might work, and MPT might help.
Just the two areas of town, and that's?
It's, again, the rent levels, the demand up there, the rent level demand up there would be probably close to making it work, and MPT might be the thing that teetered it over. Now, again, if somebody could find a piece of land of, you know, a half acre, two-thirds of an acre in size, where they could put a lot of units, they might be able to do it without that. But again, if you're looking at, you know, the 12-unit, 16-unit type projects, eight units, a lot of the small stuff probably can't make it work, because construction costs get a lot higher as you get smaller number of units. The other thing that the university did early on, a lot of those projects had fairly high bedroom counts, which helped the project, although that's come down significantly. Most projects now have under an average of three bedrooms per unit. So, yeah, you can, it can work, but Trainsong is one where rent levels are so low that it just, you know, it costs as much to build there as it does the university. Toilets cost the same, everything else costs the same.
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you, Denny.
Thank you. Thanks very much. Final item on the agenda, items for the commission and staff. Carolyn, anything?
I don't have anything for me, but we'll be back on Monday.
Okay. Rick?
Just a, a request that, I didn't realize that we had reduced our subcommittee to Just a request, that I didn't realize that we had reduced our subcommittee level so low. I think it would be good to sort of look, is there other subsidies or other areas that we might? I know that I've talked to these folks over at, just help me, John.
Sustainability?
Sustainability's one, but minority.
Oh, okay, human rights question?
Human rights, thank you. You know, I've talked to several people there that think that there ought to be a discussion occasionally between us, or some sort of liaison, mainly because of the housing issue and affordability issues.
Do you have suggestions?
Transportation-related activities that might be going on. I think that's one of the areas that I think we're all seeing the need to combine issues related to land use and transportation. Randy?
Yeah, Carolyn, I don't know if I was a planning commission appointee, or just happened to be on the planning commission, got appointed to it, but I'm on the, is it CUD or EBT? Community Block Plan.
EBT, Community Development Block, yeah.
Couldn't even spell it before again. But that's another one that would be good to have a planning commission on.
Let me follow up on each of those.
What about the Housing Policy Board? Could be a liaison there. We used to hear from them every so often.
I'll follow up on this.
John?
Just quickly, looking forward to find out whether OPI is in our future or not. Oh, good. Thank you.
All right.
Looking forward to that. Went last year and got a lot out of it.
Slightly different, slightly different topic. I know we had a little bit of, a fair amount of email traffic going back and forth about getting information relating to, to meetings. And I know there was a, I think everybody got everything they needed eventually, and.
Yeah, that was my bad.
Well, yeah, but I, I guess I just want to ask the broader question. Is there a more direct way of providing the information transfer? I'm thinking of things like an FTP site or something, that instead of having to worry about transmitting files.
It was more a question of, when we give the same materials to the city council, you need to wait till the city council gets them before we can give them to others.
Okay.
So that's what our timeline is.
Okay.
Why is that?
An FTP site is like a website.
No, I know what that is. I was wondering, why is it that city council has to make sure they get it before we get it?
Well, when we are, when we are. When we're providing you with a city council AIS, like we did for the, the MPT one, it's really not finalized until it goes out to the city council. And so, we can't risk sending an early version that is not the, that the appropriate one. So we need to wait.
Since Rick's not an official member of the planning commission, he just wants to review all that.
I was curious, because have they ever, you ever sent an AIS out to the council, and they come back and change it?
No, it's not. The council doesn't change it, but until it goes through all the city manager's office and all those things, it is not.
I'm fine with it. I thought that was curious.
But that's why we sent, we have recently been sending you kind of two-part AISs. We have more control over ones that originate with us.
And I'll do better in the future when an email comes with the word redundant, to go ahead and read the rest of it.
Any other question?
Just an observation, if you got it on your computer and don't have to wait for it to show up in the mail, you don't have to worry about that so much.
Yeah, but you have to read your emails.
Well, there's that. Which I don't always do.
I do appreciate that comment back. I'm, I'm bad.
Anything else? Any other topics? Well, then I guess we're done with that. Commissioner Rand, did you have something else?
No.